So I think we'll get started at 6:30. We'll call the meeting to order. We will start with the the pledge of allegiance. And I would just not everyone mute to do that. This is gonna be a long one. So I pledge allegiance through the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which I stand, one nation undergone indivisibility for all. Chip, I'm gonna check in with you first before we recess to the liquor control. Do you need to find out who anyone is for the record?
There are a couple people who haven't typed in their last names. If everyone could type in their last name, we'll need that for the minutes. Hey Jim Pelkey, I noticed that whenever you're unmuted, we're getting that weird voice thing. So maybe if you disconnected and reconnected, maybe it'll fix itself. But otherwise, Tim, I think I think we know who everyone is.
Okay, there's no phone numbers.
It should be better now, Chip, I think.
Okay.
Jim, I think it's because you have two devices on.
I turned the sound off from my computer.
It's the microphone on the on the second one, not the not the audio. So even if you have the audio down, it's still causing a loop.
Is it still doing it? Yeah.
Okay, we all set?
Jim, just to just mute yourself except when you speak, and I think we'll be good.
Chip, can you mute?
Yes.
I am muted.
Okay, we'll try that. Thank you, Jim. All right, I would entertain a motion to recess a council meeting, go into liquor control.
So moved.
So moved by Chad. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Kate. All those in favor, give a thumbs up. So we'll move into liquor control. Curry, I'll turn it over to you for to handle the agenda.
Sure thing. We have the final establishments in. We'll have everybody all settled. Tonight, we have a first class license and outside consumption permit for Back in Time Bed and Breakfast, and a first and third class license, caterers license, and outside consumption permit for Nellie's Pub and Grill. And I do want to update on the Nellie's Pub on the license renewal spreadsheet that council received, that everything is all set as far as any kind of liquor tax concerning Nellie's Irish pub. Sorry, Nellie's Pub.
And on both of those, no history at all of issues?
No, not I mean, not since they took it over. So anything that was there before with the previous owner was cleared out, and so no issues.
Good. Does anyone have any questions of Curry? Hearing none. I would entertain a motion for the renewal of both Back in Time and Nellie's.
I'm going to renew.
Motion by Jim.
Second.
Second by Chad. Jim, if you can re-mute, there you go. Any other questions, comments?
Tim, can you hear me?
Can hear you, Tim. Go ahead.
Curry, are you still there?
Yes.
Curry, is now we passed a resolution, I think, a while ago, a few meetings ago, that granted you the authority to sign these applications without the approval of the council. Is that correct?
So the oh, do you mean the blanket request approval for, you know, so you guys don't have to all write your signatures in? Or do you mean for the outside permits that change the outside outdoor setup for their establishment?
Yes, yes. I think we did that a few meetings ago. If you don't think we did, I'm gonna make the motion to do it now.
Sure. I think we have.
What would I?
Yeah, go ahead.
You go.
So we have established everything in the past. I think it's in the minutes before the ones that we're approving tonight. And like you said, if we haven't make the motion, just to have it be clear, but there is an internal process where I do have the go ahead to sign off on it. And I know there were some extensions to the governor's orders on some of these licenses. And I've been monitoring the portal that the Department of Liquor and Lottery has very well. So I check in with a few folks on staff just to make sure there's no kind of ordinance issues or anything at all. And then I do the the sign off on that extension. And that is different from their regular outside consumption permit, which is approved by council. So that would be just an addition, is how I kind of gather it.
Okay, before I make the motion, what I'd like to do is is I would like to be able to grant the authority of the clerk and the city manager to sign the liquor control application for liquor control applications for all outside for all side consumption permits and for all non violation applications in the last 36 months. So if someone presents an application and and they haven't had a violation in 36 months, or they need an outside liquor consumption permit, that the clerk can do that without council having to have a meeting. Can everyone hear that?
Yes.
And that would be barring like new applicants, you would absolutely want before council.
Yes.
Tim, one question for you. Is that, do you want to set a timeframe on that, or is that permanent moving forward? Or was it just mainly to get through the COVID period of time?
No, I'd like to make it permanent as long as there's been no liquor violations in the last 36 months.
Good. Can we come back to that? Let's let's finish up. Let's finish up the licenses that the first and the first class license for Back in Time and Nellie's. We have a most we'll come back to that, Tim. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye and do a thumbs up if you would. Chip and Kristen, can you see everyone? So Kristen, are we good? You got the vote you needed?
I think people are on two screens, so I may not see them all. Is that seven?
If you have.
Okay.
You have everyone's?
Okay, yep. I do.
Okay, now we'll move on back to you, Tim. If you want to make that motion again, and we'll get a second on it.
Okay, I'll make the motion that the city clerk with approval of the city manager approve all liquor control applications. All existing liquor control applications that have no violations within a 36 or any outside consumption permits.
Good.
Good, I'm good.
Also, a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Jim. Any other discussion by anyone?
Process question. I have a process question. Can we do a can we discuss and vote on something we haven't warned?
Why would this need to be a warning?
We're holding a vote. I'm just asking.
I just think it's under business of the other business of an application. I mean, it's just the way we're gonna process an application. I don't think it's a it's a it's a determination on anyone's license.
No, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying we're kind of changing the policy a little bit. I'm just asking if we're fine, we're fine. I'm okay. I just want to make sure I'm not nothing bad. Not breaking any laws.
Oh shit, but if we need to warn it, then that's fine. We I can I can withdraw it. We can warn it for the next meeting. But I just don't want to hold people up by us having to have meetings when when it's like tonight, people have a scot free record. The city manager, the city clerk, along with the city manager should be able to approve that application. A new application, they come to us. An application with a violation in the last 36 months, they come to us.
This one would have come to us anyway, though, because they haven't owned the business for three years.
Okay, right. Nellie's. Nellie's.
Tim, if you're good, why don't to be safe on it, why don't we just bring it up at the next meeting?
I'm good with that. I'm good with that.
Curry, if you can plan on putting that on the on the agenda for the next meeting, that'd be great.
Certainly can, yeah.
Do you feel good doing that, Curry? I Curry, you feel you feel okay doing that?
Absolutely. And liquor control is kind of a really, I don't know, I really enjoy it. And the the state website is really, really helpful. So I can generate reports and really keep a good eye on things and keep track. And I've got good contacts over there. So I think this this is a very workable process.
Good.
Okay.
For the record, for the record, you were, Tim, you're withdrawing your motion, and I'm withdrawing second. Okay.
Okay, thank you. Moving to minute approval from the board meeting, liquor control board meeting of June 8, 2020.
Approval minutes 2020, June 8, 2020.
Motion by Tim, seconded by Jim. Any comments, corrections, amendments? Hearing none. All those in favor, thumbs up. Kristen, let me know when you got everyone. You good, Kristen?
You lost her.
I'm good.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Chris.
Curry, anything under other business you want, or anyone from the council, any other business items?
I don't have any.
Okay. Entertain a motion, go back into the council meeting.
Move back into regular session.
There's a second.
Second.
Second by Jim, motion by Tim, second by Jim. All those in favor, say aye or a thumbs up. Okay, we're going back into executive or not executive side, we're going back into the regular council meeting. We're moving on to item number four, which is public comment regarding police transformation. Obviously, we have a number of people on the call. We want to give everyone the opportunity to speak. Everyone will have will have two minutes. That's what we've done in the past. We have two minutes for anyone who's interested. I will start from the bottom of my list and work my way up. So as I call on you, we'll need to we'll need to get a reaction from you if that you do want to speak or you do not. So we will. And if you don't want to speak, that's perfectly fine. If you're here to listen, that's wonderful. But we would encourage you to this is a comment period. This is not a question and answer period. And we would we would ask that you keep to two minutes and state your name and where do you live. So I'm gonna start at the bottom with Teresa Lucier. Teresa, if you would like to speak, you can we'll give everyone a few seconds to respond. But if I don't hear from you, we will move on.
Doesn't look like Teresa is hooked up with audio.
Looks like just a camera. Okay, we're gonna move on to Zach Scheffler. Zach?
Hello.
How are you, Zach?
Good. Zach Scheffler here, Lake Street. Just wanted some brief commentary to hit home. Two points. First is just my feelings of disappointment surrounding the MRI presentation in a previous meeting that I attended. I wanted to or I communicated how enthusiastic I was for the outside consultants to come in with their perspective on things. But having seen that meeting and having participated, I just wanted to say that I was really disappointed in what I felt was a very dismissive attitude of the consultants. And I was not encouraged that they're outside or that their opinions would be informed by a wide variety of police or law enforcement and non law enforcement advisory boards and whatnot. That's the big thing. Just feeling tremendously disappointed with the outcome of that presentation and the views that were espoused by the MRI consultants during that. Secondly, I just want to ask really straightforward and simply because I know a lot of people are gonna have explanations on the points I'm about to list. I really would love to see something that the city of Plattsburgh has been doing, the city of Barry here in Vermont has been doing, which is a civilian oversight committee or board with voting power. And I was really encouraged by the work they're doing. They review complaints. I would love St. Albans to have a civilian oversight committee that would review complaints, would conduct investigations into incidents, prove deny SAPD policies, act as a hiring committee to take part in this process that we're working through right now with the city or the city's working through, and advise the city and the SAPD on public safety issues. Particularly just from the MRI consultants, they were talking about the process of fielding complaints from the public and how that is entirely that entirely takes place within the within the city within the city power, the police power. So I would just love some outside third party involvement with hiring and police practices with the civilian oversight board that's being done elsewhere, just across the lake and right here in the state. That's all.
Thank you, Zach. Zach, that's not you. That's a different Zach. There's a Zach Scheffler, and then there's another Zach. There we go.
Hi, how's it going? I'm just here.
I'm Zach, you broke up. Did you say you're just here to listen? Okay, thank you, Zach. Bill Sawyer.
Yes, just a couple of points. One other thing, I'm fully supportive of the St. Albans Police Department. One of the things that I would like to make sure is considered is it's very easy to react to a video of what has always been a violent situation when somebody is resisting arrest, particularly when their their state of mind is not solid. Please consider the fact that if you specifically and completely disallow a particular maneuver, such as a chokehold, making that absolutely prohibited, then you may just in fact be putting a police officer, perhaps who is outmanned or outwoman, who the only way that they can gain an upper hand is to apply a chokehold just to keep themselves from getting beaten, seriously injured, or in fact killed. For example, if somebody is trying to take their gun or whatever, and they're alone, and that is the only recourse they have, that should be allowed for. The second thing I would like you to consider, the board the other night, not you guys, the the folks who brought in as consultants, were talking about hiring process. And we in St. Albans do have to ensure that we are gonna get what we pay for. And if you put too many restrictions, if you make being a police officer in St. Albans so restrictive, so difficult to pass the hiring process, that people aren't going to apply here unless you pay them a lot more money. If you're willing to pay them the money, then I'm all for it. But mostly, I would like everybody to consider that we see arrests, we see these things on on video cams now, body cams, etc. It's a violent, violent thing at times. And I would very much like you to consider how violent it might be from the officer's point of view. Thank you.
Bill, and you are from St. Albans City?
St. Albans City, yes, sir.
Thank you. We're moving on to William Brissette. William, would you like to speak? You have to unmute William if you're looking to speak.
Maybe later.
Maybe later. Okay, I'm thinking that was William. Thomas Scott. Teresa, it looks like you might have a mic now. Would you like to speak, Teresa?
Want me to just unmute her and see what happens?
Yeah, see if there's please, Chip.
You won't let me.
Okay, we'll move on from we'll move on from Teresa. We can come back to her. Next on the list was Tom Light, staff, Tim Hawkins, council member. Tanner McEwen. Tanner, would you like to speak?
Yeah, hi. Can you guys hear me all right?
We can. Go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, I just want to say I was also excited to see that there was actually a real effort to make some reforms happen, you know, as it said transformative. But what I saw, at least initially at the at the meeting last week, anything but transformative, it felt very much like a more about PR, you know, some very boilerplate sort of things related to hiring practices. I'd very much like to see more involvement with approaching matters with systemic racism and injustices. I also would like to see the city take up a lot of the recommendations by the ACLU of Vermont. I know those can be found online and have been emailed to the city council. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Tanner. Thank you for joining us tonight. We're moving on to here with me. Shayna Lucier. Shayna, would you like to speak?
I'm okay right now. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us. Moving on next is Rare Erickson. Rare, would you like to speak?
Oh, yeah, thank you. I just wanted to start by expressing some frustration with the MRI meeting and how that went and and everything that kind of followed that. I guess I was disappointed that for a group of people who are basically reviewing what the police and the city are doing, it was just four white men who were former police. And they're really their only goal is not to be critical of the past or present actions of the police department, but simply to adjust the policies and hiring practices, which to me doesn't feel very transformative, transformative, which is what it's being called. And I would dare say it's fairly reformative. MRI suggested that the real engagement with that citizens of St. Albans have in this process were, one, we vote, and two, that police would engage in the with the public in the future. That doesn't seem like real engagement. Today, Governor Phil Scott signed S219, an act relating to the addressing racial bias and excessive force. And in signing that, he asked for more items, one of which were models of community oversight for law enforcement agencies. That's also something the ACLU of Vermont has asked for and has been implemented in large and small communities across the United States. It's something that MRI scoffed at. It's necessary. It's past due. And I would really urge the city council and mayor to take up that cause and implement it. Thank you.
Thanks, Rare. Moving on, Pam McCarthy. Pam, would you like to speak?
No, thanks, Tim. I'm just here to listen. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Pam. Nilda Canelo French. Nilda, would you like to speak?
No, I'm just listening. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Mike Hoflich. If I pronounced that right, Mike?
Just listening tonight, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Michelle, do you want to speak, or you will catch up to us later?
Yeah, I'll catch up with you later.
Okay, thank you. And then we have Max Trust. Max? Max, are you there? Okay, we'll move on. Mary Johnson. Okay, so sorry, Max, would you like to speak? Okay, we'll move on to Mary Johnson.
Yes, thank you. And sorry, I don't have video. I have an old computer.
That's quite all right. We can hear you.
Okay, I guess I'm gonna sort of reiterate what a few others have said. I did attend the meeting where the MRI presentation, so I watched it remotely. And I guess I'm feels like it's adding more layers to the problem, which doesn't seem transformative to me. But I think my main thing is I would really like to see community oversight, having community involvement as who live here to oversee what happens with the police department, but separate from the police department. So no one, if they're gonna file a complaint, they don't feel like feel worried or afraid of filing it. They need to have a safe place to send their comments and complaints. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to Mary Ann Honken.
Hey there.
Hey, Mary Ann.
How's it going? I want to express similar sentiments. I'm deeply disappointed with the city's contract with MRI. And on Thursday night, I felt that the panel was dismissive and defensive and at times downright patronizing in response to questions related to transparency and accountability that could be afforded by a civilian oversight advisory board. I also think it's problematic that the MRI are law enforcement and that they're white cisgendered men. You know, their lack of diversity and experience is sure to produce deficiencies in their analysis of the SAPD. And so I call on the mayor and the city council to implement a civilian oversight advisory board with voting power that meets regularly to advise the city council and SAPD, including during this time that you're working with MRI. And as people have already said, this is a call that has been echoed by the ACLU, by Phil Scott today, and also by Attorney General P.J. Donovan. Additionally, the argument that there are few bad apples and not systemic and institutional issues with the police department is dangerous. It lulls people into a false sense of security and upholds the status quo when the police are allowed to continue business as usual. The this information about documented violence and corruption with SAPD is not new. It's not even from just two years ago. This this problem is decades old. And so I urge you to not look at these institutions, these instances of violence as situational or temporary, and to see them as embedded in the in the fabric of the institution of policing in the city. And for this reason, I don't think it's enough for individual police to be held accountable. And that we must be really critical of the SAPD as an institution so that less harm and violence happens here in St. Albans. And I also urge you to figure out non police solutions to situations involving mental health crises, homelessness, addiction, noise complaints, and other things that really don't need an armed officer to respond to. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann. We'll move on to Marisa Miles.
Hi, I just want to second what Zach and Tanner and Rare and Mary and Mary Ann all said about disappointment and also a desire to think about systemic issues and really think in a transformative way. So yeah, I just want a second or one like six to all of that.
You all set, Marisa, then? Thank you. We'll move to Chris Lukens. Chris, would you like to make a comment?
Sure, thank you. I'm here actually as Director of Voices Against Violence, Lori Telfer. And, you know, we we And, you know, we, we have a great relationship with the St. Albans Police Department, and we work very closely on a lot of different things, mainly around domestic and sexual violence. But I also want to echo some of the sentiments already stated, that I think this is a time that we can look at doing things differently and transform the work of law enforcement and the criminal justice system in general, and maybe have opportunities to really move things forward. I would be honored to be part of any committee or group that is formed to, you know, look at that, working with the St. Albans Police Department to perhaps institute new ideas and learnings that we have learned along the way. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. We will move on to Kate Bailey. Kate, would you like to say anything?
Hi, yes, can you hear me?
We can.
Sorry, I don't have video. My name's Kate, and my family has lived in St. Albans since 2016. And I work as a healthcare advocate at Vermont Legal Aid, but I'm here today to urge you and the council members to not move forward with any plans of police reform without a civilian oversight board. As mentioned earlier, Berry in Plattsburgh, this is not a radical idea, and Vermonters particularly have good reason to ask for this oversight and accountability here in St. Albans right now. Our community doesn't feel safe, and the police transformation roadmap in its current draft does not reflect the real change needed to keep our community safe and would not be a good use of our city dollars. Our community does not trust the St. Albans Police Department, and I'm incredibly disappointed to see our taxpayer dollars used for the contract with MRI. I echo the sentiments presented earlier about the disappointment in Thursday's meeting with the consultants. We, the council, basically asked law enforcement to rubber stamp the decisions of their fellow law enforcement officers, and that probably could have been done for free. Again, a civilian oversight advisory board with voting power and the power to investigate, review, and advise is a necessary first step towards real transformation of our public safety. Our neighbors who are disabled, who struggle with mental illness and substance use disorder, and to our Black Indigenous and people of color are telling us the solution to this problem. We have the knowledge and we know the answers. We know Vermont town, police budgets have been growing for years, and that's had little change in crime rates. We know school resource offices, officers discipline students of color and students with disabilities at alarmingly high rates. And we know that the use of force is being abused and used to punish people extrajudiciously. So in conclusion, it's past time to start taking racial justice, police violence, and this lack of public accountability seriously. The current police transformation roadmap is a change in title alone, and I urge you to consider these necessary steps outlined here by your constituents for a true transformation and safety in St. Albans. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. Kate LaRose.
Hi, Kate LaRose, St. Albans resident. On June 15th, the city council released a statement on policing. It said, "We stand in solidarity with our community and people across the country, stating unequivocally that Black lives matter. The council supports the peaceful protest of systems that oppress people of color and far too often lead to violent encounters between citizens and the police officers who are sworn to serve and protect them. All lives can't matter until Black lives matter. The city council will not hesitate to use its authority to identify and change policies that contribute to oppression and injustice. We will work to examine our own biases and those of our police department head on. As a St. Albans City resident, I am requesting that you make good on this promise to actively confront systemic racism and implicit bias among not just the members of the police force, city staff, and volunteers, but within all aspects of city government." This morning, the ACLU of Vermont wrote a letter to the city council. It outlined three proposed changes to SAPD policies and a 10-point plan for police transformation in Vermont, including specific recommendations for St. Albans. I am requesting that the city council adopt these in full. Additionally, I would like the council to provide an update on when the de-escalation training will be rescheduled and when the requested two years of use of force incident data will be made available to the public. If we have any hope of addressing systemic racism, implicit bias, and restoring the public's trust in our police department and city government, these are the first steps that must be taken. They will require courage, they will require humbleness and leadership, and they will require the council to deeply engage the community like never before. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. Carly Gunderson. Carly, are you available? Carly? Okay, we'll move on to Joshua Curtis. Joshua, would you like to say anything? Joshua, are you there?
He just messaged, he's just listening.
Oh, yeah, okay. Thanks, Chad.
Yeah, Tim, let me get back to Carly for a sec. I think she's calling in, and I don't know if she can unmute herself on the phone.
We'll come back to her. We'll keep moving.
Yeah, it's not letting me unmute her either.
Okay. Jonathan Jeru. Jonathan?
I'm good, Mayor.
Thank you.
Just listening.
Joanne Bichard. Joanne, are you there?
Just listening, thank you.
Jeff Sharp. Jeff, can you join us? Okay, moving on. Jim Levy.
Okay, can you hear me? I'm here tonight because I'm very, very, very upset, indeed angry. The reason I'm upset and angry is this morning I became aware of a very offensive poster which appeared on a tree on the sidewalk opposite my office.
Jim, Jim, can I, Jim, can I interrupt you one second? Okay. Jeff, I will come back to you. Thank you for muting again. Okay, Jim, sorry to interrupt.
Okay, so I've listened to all of this, and I'd like to be heard. So if I can explain what happened without interruption, I'd appreciate it.
Go ahead.
So I came to my office this morning, and there was a fix to a tree on the city sidewalk, a poster which said Jews rape kids and run to Israel to hide. I have a copy of it here, which all you good folks can see. I was affronted by it, and it demonstrates to me that there is a, quote, a systemic problem in St. Albans, not involving the police. This is not the first time that I've become aware of posters directed at different community members. This time it's directed against Jews, and I'm very proud to say that I am of that persuasion. Next week, it could very well be Black Lives Don't Matter. And the week after that, it could well be Muslims Need to Be Incinerated. I believe that everyone has a right of free speech. I think that it would be a mistake to view this strictly as a criminal problem. I welcome the opportunity of whoever the bigot was who posted this, he has the right, he, she, it has the right to do that. The problem, as I see it, is that we as a community should have a, an appropriate response mechanism. And what I am proposing, and the only reason I'm attending this session tonight, is that I feel very, very strongly that we should try to identify the individual or individuals who posted this hate, defamatory remarks, and try to first, once we know who the person or persons are, there should be an opportunity to educate that individual, engage in a dialogue. I'm thinking of the role that a restorative justice system might play in it. But beyond that, if the individual is incorrigible and not susceptible to being reached by an educational outreach, I think the community has a right to know who the individual or individuals are. And to make that happen, I would propose that there be a fund established, either through restorative justice or through some other entity, maybe the United Way, to offer reward money, $100, $200 for information leading to the disclosure of the individuals responsible for this hate mongering. And then the community will know about it. People today know when there are sex predators living in their midst. I think we all should have the right to know who our neighbors are, and maybe there would be an opportunity to educate them, to talk to them. But the, the very least, we should have the ability to protect our children and other sensitive individuals. No one, no one, irrespective of their color, their religion, their ethnicity, should be subjected to this type of hate. Today, it focused on me, and I might add that this particular poster was not just on the tree opposite my law office, but it was, apparently there were other similar posters in Taylor Park and elsewhere. Now, again, I emphasize, free speech does enter into this discussion, and I'm not suggesting that whoever did this should be criminally prosecuted. I am suggesting that we as a community should have the right to know who amongst us is doing this sort of thing. And I think in the process, deterrence would be built into the system. Freedom of speech does not mean, mean freedom of reach. And it doesn't mean that the members of the Ku Klux Klan and others have the unbridled ability to affect our community. We as a community...
You gotta wrap it up.
Yeah, we as a community do have an opportunity to do something, and I would be most upset if we didn't take advantage of it. Black lives matter, so do Jewish lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for joining us tonight. We're going to go back to Jeff Sharp.
Can you hear me okay?
We can. Go ahead, Jeff.
Thank you very much. I'm just going to read a statement. Recent calls to at least partially defund the St. Albans Police Department radically change, I think, are short-sighted. I think such efforts endanger public safety and would do little to advance the cause of any racism. The high crime rate only a few years ago in St. Albans...
Jeff, you got muted somehow.
Bear, can you hear me?
You're good, yep.
The police department's recent use of force issues, they invested in the MRI review. I got off track here, I'm sorry. The police department with innovative street crimes unit has done a lot to reduce crime, and it has improved the quality of life in St. Albans. We weren't going to move here before. I'm a longtime area resident, but we decided to, just a few years ago, because the crime rate has improved. Also, the, the street crimes unit improved crime, has sustained revitalization, and is thriving downtown. It has been at the forefront in Vermont of improvements, and the department has been transparent and has some accountability in its policing, it's been at the forefront in the state. The recent use of force issues, I know they invested in the MRI review, I think the review should be, play out, it should be heard. But however, any improvements that it may suggest can't be implemented if funding is reduced. If anything, it should be increased to implement any proposals, training, additional equipment for increased accountability. I think it should be supported with some changes. I think, like I said, the review should play out. Thank you for the opportunity, and yes, I am a St. Albans City resident.
Thank you, Jeff. Thanks for joining us. We have Angie Sturm.
Yes, hello. Thank you.
Hello, Angie.
I wanted to express disappointment as well with the MRI presentation. I really think the place to begin to address its shortcomings would be to create a community advisory board with voting power. I also really like the idea of all the citizens receiving complaints about police and working with people to resolve their problems, because who would go to the perpetrator to make a complaint? And I believe we need to find non-police solutions for problems which aren't, don't require police. And also, I have a sense that our, our city, both employees and residents, and also children in schools, really have a need for ongoing aggressive anti-racism training. Systemic racism in particular is something I've been working on for a long time, and it's still hard to see. It takes a lot of work, and it's hard work, and it's uncomfortable work. Uncomfortable for me right now, even talking about it. But I think that our community needs the ability to get together and, and work these problems out. The problem of talking about racism, the problem of seeing it, and, and this is a non-police solution and would be harm-reductive in our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Angie. Casey Robert. Did Casey speak yet? Casey, do you want to speak? Casey? If not, we'll move to Brendan DeSau. Brendan?
Hi, Tim, how are you?
Brendan, yourself?
Good. Hey, I wanted to chime in. The town has, and has had for several years, a police advisory board. And what that does is it reviews periodically policies, making sure that the contract we have with our outside policing services providers enforced in full, where resources should be delegated by our outside contractor. But that, that advisory board, that citizen advisory board, doesn't have the vested authority to be able to handle something as transformative as an update to as many policies as what I think MRI is going to get into. They did, at the Thursday night meeting, call for some key stakeholders in the community to be involved with SAPD's hiring process. I mean, we're all, we're all kind of on this call tonight because SAPD has an issue with the use of force and then hiring folks who probably shouldn't have been hired. A lot of that can be fixed by just fixing our hiring practices, and I think that's what you're, what you're doing. But to repetitively ask for a citizen advisory board with this vague voting power request, it just doesn't make sense. You have a citizen advisory board that's called in, a contractor of comprised of expert law enforcement officers to review practices and policies that they find to be a problem. They are a problem. They caught the problem. They're trying to fix it. They're involving us tonight as community members by taking comments. They represent the, the city in its entirety. There's one from each ward. They're city councilors. They're duly elected officers to represent city residents in cases like this. So keep up the good fight, guys. You're doing, you're doing what you need to do. I would say after you get through this would be the perfect time to convene your own police advisory board and get a lot of stakeholders in the room and then execute some of these proposals from MRI. But good job, Tim, this has been a difficult meeting to run. You're doing, you're doing really well.
Thank you, Brendan. Moving on to Andrew Grattan. Andrew, do you want to say anything?
Oh.
Go ahead, Andrew.
Can you hear me?
We can.
I'm just listening, thanks.
Thank you. And we'll move on to Alice Johnson. Alice? Alice, can you join us, or would you like to join us?
She's just listening on the chat.
Oh, you're right. Thank you, Mike. I'm gonna, I don't think we've missed anyone unless there was someone who could not get on. I would...
Tim, hey, I've been, I'm wondering if we might want to give, oh, shoot, I forget her name.
Was it Carly Gunderson? I was wondering.
I want to give her another chance. I think if she presses star six, she can unmute herself, but I couldn't unmute her phone. And then, I'm being told on the chat that Casey might have just been putting his kid down and might still want to speak.
Okay. So let's give, let's give Casey and Carly a few, few moments to see if they will join us.
So Carly, if you'd like to speak, hit star six on your phone. I think only you can unmute yourself. Otherwise, you can listen in. Otherwise, you can listen in.
I do see also where Peter Delory may have joined us late. Peter, if you wanna say anything, go ahead while we wait for Carly and Casey. I don't hear from anyone here in a few moments. We will-
Timmy?
Peter, is that you?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Very sorry I'm late. I know you're doing some important stuff. And I'm not sure, like I said, coming late to the party here, I think the meeting is important. I thought the meeting the other night with the board that you hired was a fantastic move in the right direction. And I think you're looking at experts that know what to do. And I already agree with the little part that I heard from the last lady, as far as the police advisory board. We elect the city council to do that for us. And I think I'd said it at the last meeting, I'm not sure we need citizens overviewing something as specialized as a police force. We hire these guys. It's a difficult job, and they're experts. They're trained. They are professionals. And aside from very minor things like, you know, telling them the way they should dress while on duty, that sort of thing. And even that, we hire a police chief for that. I'm not sure how much citizens ought to be involved in the day-to-day operation of a police department. I think you've hired very good people. Gary Taylor is a friend and I think a very good professional. He brought the city a long way. And I thought he did a great job. There were some issues. I agree with that. And I think, I'm not sure how long Mo's gonna be around, but I think Mo Lamah is also just a great person in that position. I think sometimes we have to let the leaders lead and use their expertise. And if they can't do that, then you look for someone that can. But I'm not sure of how big a role citizens need to play in police departments.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Have a good night.
Yeah, you also.
Thank you. So we're coming back to both Casey and Carly. Give them one last chance.
I can't seem to unmute either of them myself for some reason. You'll have to do it.
So, once again, I wanna thank everyone for joining in on the call. We appreciate that. We will continue the discussion, I'm sure. What I would just share with folks is this isn't gonna be done overnight. This is an ongoing process, and the council and the city manager and the police chief and police department will chip away at this, and we will continue to make improvements. It may not be as fast as many of you want, but we will continue to work towards to the goal that makes our city better. So I guess my comment to all of you would be be patient. And we'll continue to work together. And with that said, not all parties will get everything you want or need, but we will make improvements and try to get to a point where we are, we have a strong police department and a strong community. So, and with that, we're moving on to item number five, which is consider the adoption of the police transformation roadmap. And I would reinforce that this is just one step of the process that the council has been engaged in for some time. I can't reinforce that enough, that this is one step in the process. So with that, Dominic, I will turn it over to you to work on item number five, consider adoption of police transformation roadmap.
Well, thank you, Mayor. You know, as a preliminary matter, having listened to the dialogue over the last half an hour or so, I'm struck mostly that perhaps I could have done a better job of managing expectations. I think the MRI effort that the council retained the police department for began in April and was intended to address the issues that culminated for the city in April. And I think some of the advocates had a different vision, had a different set of expectations about what this effort would be, that it would be more in response to the national discussion. And I accept responsibility for not clarifying that. Nonetheless, I think that the purpose of this document is laid out in the preamble. The intent of it, not reading from it yet, but the intent of having a roadmap is to respond to the concern that MRI didn't issue a report. They didn't issue 10 recommendations, and there wasn't a checklist that the public and the city council can use to hold accountable. And this transformation roadmap, again, grows out of our efforts with handling excessive force. It's based on our analysis of where the problem originates and is designed to provide a roadmap that we can use going forward as to how we're gonna respond to those changes. And it's designed to be a dynamic document that's updated as we go. So to that end, it begins, "The city of St. Albans has committed to transforming its police department and building community trust in the wake of multiple excessive force incidents. We believe the most efficient and effective way to achieve this is to adopt the principles and practices of 21st century policing and retain national experts to assist our department with timely implementation. 21st century policing, incidentally, grew out of Ferguson. And it's, we viewed it as a very timely response to the issues facing our city police department." Document goes on to list five values in brief, or that we need to strike the proper balance between the guardian and the warrior roles of our police officers. That we need to embrace community engagement. That we need to ensure fair and impartial policing through procedural justice principles. That we need to build community capital through positive interactions based on more than just enforcement interactions. That we need to pay attention to officer wellness and safety. And we need to recruit, hire, and select the best officers possible. Those were into items that were created out of whole cloth. They flowed directly from President Obama's 21st century policing initiative. In the coming weeks, the city will be working to align our department policies and practices with those values. We do that by adopting the policies which guide the behavior and the expectations for the officers in the field. And we have identified foundational policies, not operational nuts and bolts, but foundational policies that reflect the values of the organization. And we got a checklist. We're gonna adopt new policies around recruitment and officer selection. That will be amended to reflect the importance of hiring the best officers possible and will include broader representation from the community and the department on the interview panel. Currently, it's just done by the leadership team in the department. That will be opened up as a part of that. We will no longer do our own background investigations. Policy will be amended to go further and deeper when investigating the background and character of potential police officers. We will no longer do our internal investigations and complaint investigation. This policy will be amended to provide independent third-party review of alleged inappropriate actions, a clear process for filing complaints, and regular reporting on the number and type of complaints and internal investigations. For those that have called on this call for much greater transparency and third-party participation, that's exactly what this is designed to provide, independent review of complaints and performance issues. We'll adopt a new policy on response to resistance. This policy will be amended to ensure that the degree of force is appropriately aligned with the degree of resistance. It will codify the duty to intervene and other best practices. Fifth policy is on officer training. This policy will be amended to align with national best practices and ensure our officers are receiving regular training in a handful, in a minimum of a handful of key areas that have been overlooked recently. Training on de-escalation, training on guardian strategies, training on bias-free policing, and other foundational elements of establishing the organizational culture that we seek in our department. Finally, policy on transparency will reflect the department's efforts to inspire public confidence and trust through regular publication of our fair and impartial policing data, officer performance data, and community policing benchmarks. The document concludes by reaffirming our commitment to regular reporting. One of the ways in which that will occur is we'll have a standing line item for the chief of police and department leaders and officers to present at their council meeting. I think one of the mistakes we've made in the past is the police chief has interfaced extensively with the city manager and hasn't had as much interfacing with the public and reporting out on some of these initiatives. And during this time, we think it's really important that the chief and key staff members report out on those efforts to improve the department. And finally, we're taking increasing interest in the CALEA standards, C-A-L-E-A, which are the good housekeeping seal of approval for modern professional police departments. It's not without cost, but it's one of the things that I think might help respond to the challenges in front of us. And speaking for me personally, I would, I think it's a great goal to, over the next three years, help ensure that the chief is able to lead the department from our current status to becoming a CALEA-certified department. That'd be quite an accomplishment. We've got other needs that are more pressing, but it's always good to have a vision for further down the road. So that's it in a nutshell. I'd welcome questions from the council and beyond.
All right, if I start, Tim?
Go ahead, Chad.
So first off, I don't have this big speech written out, and I'm a terrible orator. So I usually end up stuttering, missing about 19 steps in my 21 steps that I'm trying to get through. So just be, please be patient.
Two minutes.
Tough. I really, I really think that there should be a chief's advisory council. You know, as Brendan pointed out and I have written down, it's not groundbreaking for our police department to have this. We do it to some extent with the town. It's just adding some extra pieces to it. So the pieces that I see that that group could do is the review of policies. And I think it's good to have an outsider review these, you know, review other policies. I do it at work very frequently. I'm not a nurse. I'm not a medical professional in any sense. I have electrical mechanical engineering degrees. It's fire removed from nursing and that type of skill as possible. But it's the things that I pick up sometimes when I'm reviewing those that end up making those documents stronger. And by having folks in our community that are not police officers review those, it diversifies the eyes and the perceptions that we see. And it will only improve the policies and procedures that we develop and put forth, that our police officers look up to and look for guidance. The other thing I think is review the use of force incidents. Several people have talked about voting rights. I'm not sure exactly what that means. So that's a conversation I'd like to have further. But, you know, having a group advise, you know, and help the chief with those kinds of incidents, I think, again, it further strengthens our bond between our police officers and our community. And the last thing is, for the hiring committee, I don't, I don't, I don't like to see this committee, the folks on this committee doing the hiring. I see them as recommending folks to the police chief, to recommend to the city council, or however we end up doing that. We've never done any community engagement with hiring police officers. But that's how, those are the three things I see that, like, those should be no brainers. These are not, none of those three seem like they are deal breakers. There's some other ones I would like to sprinkle in there that will be a little tougher conversation probably to have. But those three are not an issue. And I thought about it a little bit last night. You know, it just, it's gonna help our police department stay ahead of the curve. So, you know, there was a time period, you know, I remember what St. Albans was like 14 or 15 years ago. I mean, I had my house, someone sprayed graffiti on my house, you know. I, with Mayor Delory, went around cleaning up graffiti. I mean, we had a pig's head put on, put on the courthouse parking lot. So I remember all that, and I remember, you know, that, the four or five years after that. It was transformational. We felt like we were ahead of the curve. I don't feel like we're anywhere near the head of the curve. I mean, we're way down on the bell curve, and it's not on the good side. So I think by involving citizens and bringing these ideas that normal, like, I don't think of all this stuff. I can't believe a police officer would think of all this, all the things that come, you know, all the things that, policies and procedures, the advancement of them, you know. It would, I just think it'd be good for other eyes to see it. And, you know, I have some other ideas. I just, if we want transparency in our police department, it's gonna involve citizen engagement. And why do we want the new police chief going to this organization, going to this other organization, talking with this group and talking negative, when we can get them together and he can talk, or she can talk with them all together at one time? And can have good dialogue back and forth, because you're gonna have that better dialogue when there's eight or 10 people in the room. Is it gonna suck sometime, and it's going to be, it's going to be hard? Absolutely. Is sometimes your one and a half hour meeting is gonna drag into four hours? Absolutely. But when we're done with that meeting, we will, this community, our police department, our citizens, will be stronger because of it. And, you know, I did think about it a little bit. You know, for me, an advisory committee looks like two citizens at large, two business owners, two nonprofits. I had Chris on my list, so I'm glad she volunteered, the chief, and then one other. I had a city council member, but you know what? Listening to everyone, I don't even want it to be a city council member anymore. I don't wanna have, I don't think we should have a part in this. So does that make a third person at large or something? I don't know. Does that make it the city manager? Probably not. So anyway, I just feel that that is not a tough step, that's not a tough step to ask, is for us to take that step forward. I also have a couple other things. Equity and racism training to include the city council, I think we could all benefit from it, not just the police department. So I know it's not really in this document, but I just wanted to toss that out there as well. And then the last thing I really would like to see, and we can put it in this, but in the end, I don't really want it there. I would like, and I love Jim Benson. Jim Benson's a great guy. He's really good at diffusing situations. And maybe he is the answer, but I would really like a more, to beef up our animal control. So I'm not having an officer go to do that, to go pick up a dog that we see. And Jim's great. Jim lives 45 minutes away, and it's just by the time, by the time he gets here, the animal's usually gone or, you know, it just, so if I could combine that with maybe parking enforcement and make it a full-time position. I think Tim just told me my two minutes are up, so, thanks.
You went over, got by just a little, Chad.
Yeah, I'll keep it short at the end, I promise. I've only got six things.
Other council members?
Yeah, I'll speak. I just wanna echo Chad's desire for there to be a community advisory panel, and I think that we should really think about what the makeup of that is. And I am inclined to have some elected official be on there. So I think that's one of the conversations we might wanna have at a future meeting and get a recommendation, you know, looking at Barry's policy, they have a city councilor on there. on there. One of the chief recommendations, if you look at the Vermont Human Rights Commission, Eight Can't Wait, like, people who are doing the, the work of recommending things to transform police departments is to have more citizen engagement. And I don't think the city council wants to, or really has the ability to do the dive of learning more about the police department. We're layers removed with our city manager form of government, and that's the way that it, that it is and has been. It doesn't mean it's the way it always has to be. And I think we're hearing from a lot of our neighbors that they want to understand more. And I'd like to, to, to have deeper conversations about how we want our police to work and have an opportunity for citizens to come to folks who are their neighbors. So, anyway, I, I just want to say that I think that needs to be a part of the roadmap and added to it. I also want to thank you, Dom, because some of these recommendations are great, and the comments we heard. I, I, I was really disappointed with MRI's presentation for a number of reasons, and I think that it was true that the expectation that some had when they came to the meeting that it was going to address systemic racism, it was going to address some of the fundamental things that I think have been troubling to many of us about policing in general. And it wasn't that, it was not going to be that. And we all, I think we all on the council knew that it wasn't going to be that, and yet I think it got built a little bit on Facebook and then others sort of rolled with it, and it became a thing where people showed up at the meeting and expected something that they were never going to get from that meeting. Then on top of that, there were a number of really problematic things said by the folks from MRI that maybe questioned whether they are the right people. So when Alan first came to us and talked to the council, I felt great about it. And I was like, okay, they're going to tell us some recommendations to address these hiring and, and other policy issues, that'll be really useful. And then when I saw those four very experienced police officers, those, you know, cisgendered white guys, talking about policing and policy in a way that was patronizing and was dismissive of some of the folks from our community that were asking them questions, and then on top of that was doing things like not using person-first language and, you know, using, you know, going down and talking to homeless people as an example of community engagement, those things were really highly problematic and maybe questioned whether we want to really limit the focus of MRI's work to the very specific things that we need to see in terms of making sure we're getting up to those professional policing standards around hiring and use of force. And, and then we need other avenues and other mechanisms to make sure that we're doing the deep work both on the council and with the police department in terms of dealing with the issues of systemic racism and oppression. And, and so I think the citizens advisory panel is sort of the first big step in that direction and a place for us to have those deeper conversations. So I'd like to see us actually adopt that.
Any other council persons?
Yeah, I wouldn't mind chiming in, Tim. I've always been one that feels we need some community involvement and, and issues. I was on a couple of advisory panels myself in my time, in my youth. And I think community involvement in this process is important. I don't think they should, that the community should have controlling interests as to what we do, but I think an advisory panel would be a, a great starting place, a chief's advisory panel, so that we can have citizens advise the chief as to hiring or use of force issues, things of that nature. I, I agree a lot with what Chad and, and Mike are saying in that respect. Unfortunately, I was, I was listening to MRI remotely, so a lot of it I didn't catch, though the sound quality wasn't great from where I was. But, so I'll defer to the folks that were there as to how they felt about whether they were effective or not. I know, I don't care if they're four white guys or four black guys or what they are, but they apparently are police chiefs that, in my opinion, think they know what's best for us, and we should just go along for the ride and let their expertise dictate with, to us, how we should proceed on this. And I don't know if that's the right answer or not. But anyway, we don't really have to go there right now, but certainly I think that the citizen advisory council to the police chief is a good start to get some citizen involvement into this process. And by the way, the Chad's discussion about the animal control officer, I like Mr. Benson too, but having had some groundhog woodchucks trapped recently, I agree we should have someone in town that's an animal control officer. And maybe, I never thought of it, but maybe the parking enforcement officer could also be the animal control officer. But that's something for a later discussion. I, I know, you know, people are saying there are certain things that our police do that someone else, a third party, can do. Well, there's a good example of it. Police shouldn't have to go around helping pick up traps for animals when the animal control officer, who's a north hero, isn't here, or, or go and even, even set them if he's unavailable. It's just something that somebody else should be able to do. That's where I'm at.
Thank you, Jim. Looking to Marie, Tim, Kate, anything to add?
Yeah, I'd like to make some comments, Tim, if I could.
Go ahead, Kate.
To start, just a question for you, Dom. I think I heard you say that this is a dynamic document. And so I'm wondering how much it pins us down and how much we need to, you know, how much time we need to spend sort of wordsmithing pieces of it? Or is this something that if we decide next week or next month that we want to tackle something or add it to the list, we could do that? How dynamic is it?
It's as, it's as dynamic as the council wishes it to be. You could amend it every month if you'd like.
Because I think I would rather we spend some time getting some actual work done than, you know, maybe wordsmithing this document tonight or in the future. There are wording pieces about it that I find, you know, that we could improve, but I don't know, I'd rather just move forward and work on stuff, I guess. So I'm glad to hear that. I have just a couple of comments. I really think something that's clear to me is that we really need to work on rebuilding the trust in our department. And keys to that are transparency and accountability. That's, that's how we're going to build trust and engagement. So I think it's really important that we create a citizen review panel of some kind, and I don't know exactly what the makeup should be, but I think it's really important that we get diverse voices into the conversation on things like hiring, policy review, and review to, review of incidents where force is used. I think it, those are just really key components and, and something we should do. I'm also really glad that this roadmap talks about community engagement, and I was particularly pleased about the piece that says the city council will be hearing from, you know, getting updates on a regular basis with a standing agenda item. I think that's a great idea, and I, I like what you had to say, Dom, about the chief of police, police department having more direct engagement with the council. I've heard loud and clear that we haven't done a great job of this accountability, and I want us to do a better job. And then just to finish, you know, I think St. Albans is a place, obviously, where people are passionate about the community, and I think that's a good thing. I think we can take this energy and, you know, we can invest it in making improvements. This is an amazing opportunity for us to, you know, to make real changes. You know, we, we're, we're in a moment of change, so let's seize the opportunity and make it better. Thanks.
Thank you, Kate. Marie, anything to add to those? Hearing none.
Can I make one more, just really quick comment?
Oh, Chad.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Sorry. I would really like to hear from someone from either the Vermont Racial Justice Alliance or the governor's, I think he has a governor's equity, I don't know if it's a committee or there's a, there's a person that runs that. I would really like to hear from some of these, someone from one of those groups, because, you know, I did, I got, I got the police chief perspective, but that's one corner of a, you know, of a circle. So it's, it's like, you know, there's all these other pieces that we are not hearing that I think would be really beneficial for us.
Anything else, Chad?
Come back on quickly. I don't know if Dom mentioned it when he was talking about the roadmap. If he did, I missed it, I'm sorry. But the section where there'd be a line item on every council agenda to discuss with the police chief, police matters, I think is a, is a good plus, a good positive, and should definitely start like immediately, like next month.
Starting this month, Jim.
This month, yes.
Thank you, Jim. Last chance, any other comments?
Tim, while we're on this subject, I just wanted to really quickly, I know one of the, the folks during public comment mentioned S219. So that was something the legislature passed a couple of weeks ago, and the governor signed the bill today, so it's now law. I'm not sure what the act number is, but it does a number of things. And one of the things that it, that it does is that it makes it illegal for any police in the state of Vermont to use chokeholds that are going to restrict breathing or, or blood flow. And, and that came with the support of, of the Vermont State Police and a number of other folks. It also, you know, it, it has another, a number of other reforms around reporting of the race or ethnicity of a person who's, has an interaction with police, and it has greater use of force reporting. So I just wanted to say all that to say that we're not doing this work in a vacuum, you know, that these are state and national efforts. And I think that if, if we do a good job, we, we can get ahead of the curve, as Chad said. And, and right now, it feels like we're, because we've been so focused on our own issues and doing some good work there to respond to the, the issues that we've had, we've kind of missed being on top of some of the other things that we need to be doing in parallel. So I'm looking forward to kind of engaging in this conversation and doing that work.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Okay, so let's move, let's move off from this. I think it sounds like we have two options here. We can adopt the current roadmap that Dom has shared, with the understanding it's fluid and it can change, or, it sounds like there's a lot of interest on the advisory committee, and we can send it back to Dom and continue those discussions. Dom, what are your thoughts?
My first thought is look out for the train. I think we should get some legal, I, my advice would be to adopt it and the council's request for a committee. The interest of some counselors in a committee is clearly documented. I think we need to get some legal advice about how far we can go without amending the city charter. The city charter provides that the city council deals with the staff through the city manager. Police chief reports to the city manager. I want to come back to that in a minute around this idea of accountability. And it's, I, I have concerns about us eroding the former government, candidly, and obviously I have an interest in it, and so I think you need a legal opinion about how far you can You can go as far as you want, you just might need to amend the charter. So that, and I think that, that, that could take some time. You know, for instance, let me just give you a, a scenario. Somebody files a excessive force complaint, and under our policy, we would not investigate that ourselves, we would have that investigated independently by an expert. And that commit, that expert says one thing, and the citizen committee maybe concurs with the expert, maybe doesn't. And then where does that go from there? Does, how does that affect the city manager's relationship with the chief of police? Who does the chief of police work for? You know, that, and you've got a lot of folks quite clearly on this call who are disappointed with the performance of our police department, many of whom are going to want to be on that committee. I think that makes it really hard to recruit for a police chief. And finally, we're being criticized as not holding the department accountable enough. I have fallen on my sword and tried to accept as much responsibility as I possibly can for the hiring piece, but I don't think that there's evidence that we haven't held officers accountable. We just lost a police chief in large part because he fired too many officers. From, so that's why the police chief suffered, experienced the no-confidence vote. And I don't see this increasing accountability. I think we could very well end up in, in irons and unable to move forward with power vested in the council, power vested in a manager, power vested in a citizens committee, and a whole bunch of employees with a union contract and property rights and for cause removal. I think the current situation is working, and I think we should move slowly before we tinker with it.
Okay, can I, could I, Chad, could I respond to that a minute?
Go ahead, Jim.
Thank you. Dom, I don't know where you're coming from on that. I, I understand what a city manager form of government is. You're the executive, you're the administrator, the, the police chief answers to you, you make the major decisions regarding the department. The, the council is the legislative branch, I know all that. I don't think anybody is suggesting that the council wants to take over your, usurp your role in this. Also, this advisory board that Chad has suggested is not the oversight committee that the other group has suggested that has more power to, to veto decisions. This is clearly just an advisory group, this is what we think should happen, chief so-and-so. And the chief can either reject it or, or not reject, I, I don't see where the balance of power is changing. So I guess I'm confused as to your reaction to that.
Jim, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm happy to talk with you individually, I, I'm not going to spar with the council on a Zoom call. I have concerns about it. I respect the council's right to set policy and to set this up, and will do my best to function within the structure they decide.
Dom, when can you get us legal advice by?
What's it on?
Yeah, we don't, we don't know what the makeup of the committee is.
You gotta, there's gotta be something, you know, pass a motion, pass a, you, what do you want? Do you want legal advice on how far you can go?
I want legal, legal advice on, on, yeah, a citizens, a citizens advisory committee to the chief. Okay, I fully, I fully understand that our chief, it's, it's our, it's our chief of police department's neck, okay? If something bad happens, the citizens advisory committee is not going to be the ones that lose their job. They're not going to be the one that are held accountable by the community or, or the council. I understand that, and that, that's the reason why I feel that in the end, the, the decision really needs to fall with the chief, because that's the person that's held responsible. But that doesn't mean that someone can't give, give him or her sound, solid advice on, hey, here's something you really need to think about, or here's something, or this is, this is something that's happening somewhere else, and this is, you know, we want to think about this, this is something we want to think about now, instead of two years down the road when something happens. I just, I don't, I just, I don't see the, the issue with that.
But what happens if... But what happens if the, the, the chief says, no, I, I don't think that's something we want to explore. And my boss and the city council haven't directed me to do it.
The, so what I would say, Dom, and I, I don't want to speak for Chad, but, but what I took away from the comments that he made when he initiated this conversation about an advisory board was that they would be consultative, not deliberative. And that if there are policy changes that need to be made, that there might be a recommendation from a citizen advisory panel, but that it would be the council that would make those policy changes. That, you know, no, uh, if we're appointing a, a body to take more input and to give more perspective to the council, I think that's, that's what we were looking for. We're not, at least I'm not looking for, uh, having a, a body of people that are going to have the power to directly contradict the will of the council.
Neither do I, so.
Oh, let me jump in here. So what I'd like to do is, um, we have the roadmap in front of us. And from, um, from my understanding from many of you, um, we still want to pursue the MRI recommendations as what I gathered from conversations I've had. My suggestion is, um, we entertain a motion to adopt this policy, not, it's not a policy, it's a roadmap. And, uh, to Kate's point, we start doing things relative to this and moving it forward. Obviously, the advisory committee is a discussion that we're not going to finish here tonight. And we can revisit that, um, at a later time when we have a little more structure to it. So that's what I would like to move forward is, at least we agree upon the roadmap. And once again, this is, this goes back to my point that it's, uh, this is an ongoing project. This isn't, this isn't going to be over here tonight or tomorrow. This is, uh, many small steps to get where we need to be. So are we on board with approving the roadmap that, uh, Dom has presented? And we continue the discussion, uh, and the advisory committee is just one piece of that discussion moving forward. Everyone has some thoughts on how we might, might do better. And we can address those as we, um, as we move down the road, so.
Tim, can I ask, Do- Dominic, is there anything that you would change in the roadmap after what you've heard so far tonight?
I would leave the roadmap as is, and I would ask for your permission to work with the council via email to generate a question to be presented to legal counsel that reflects the sentiments discussed. You know, the, the idea of a community, uh, advisory board, I think may not be going away. And so I think we should get some legal advice about the parameters of, of that discussion. But I'd encourage you to adopt the roadmap as is and put a stake in the ground and we can move it further as we move, move it further along, you know, next time. But we have to have something.
Okay, then for the floor then, um, I'll, uh, make the motion that we adopt, uh, the police transformational roadmap presented by the city manager.
Is there a second? Thank you, Tim. Is there a second on moving this forward?
I'm ju- I'm ju- I'm, I'm sorry, Dom, I'm just really hesitant just because I got this thing like today. And I, you know, I mean, if this is a first draft and we're going to then, um, discuss this and have something much better for next month, maybe, but I,
Well Chad, I choose the motion, move it for discussion and ask that question. And then I'll either go up or down based on our, our yea or nay.
Okay, I'll second it then.
Okay, so we have a second on, uh, approving the roadmap. Motion by Tim, second by Chad. Chad, you have some comments? Were you, I don't want to add to that, or are you all set?
I'm all set, that's just my question. I, I just think there's some stuff in here that needs work. Um, I, I would like to see underneath the transparency piece, looking into a chief's advisory council that's not on there. Um, there's some other stuff that I, we got today from the ACLU that I would like to add in there that I think are, I mean, it's not hard stuff to add and to think about. I just, I got this too late, I got too much information today is what, is what happened. And I just don't, I, 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 I work a job, I don't have time to, to, uh, sit and review all this stuff constantly. So, uh, yeah.
You made a comment, I want to comment on it too. I, I agree with you a hundred percent, uh, on two things. One is we got a lot of information tonight. Number two, this format stinks. This should have never been brought up in this type of format. This, we should have been in the city hall, just like we were in city hall when we heard from those gentlemen from MRC. And, um, and I, and because we lost out, I mean, this, my, my phone has rebooted two or three times. My computer's rebooted a couple of times, uh, for Zoom. And I wanted to make sure I heard every piece of information from the public. And I would have been able to do that in a live forum in the city hall. And there's no reason why we shouldn't have been able to do it that way. But having said that, I agree a hundred percent with what you just said, Chad. And, 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 and we got a lot of information tonight. And I wanted, in, in, in my motion for this, and from my understanding from Dominic, is this is a working document. It's a working transformation, working document. Um, so I agree.
And, uh, you know, I, I was gone a good part of the day to a medical appointment and other errands. I didn't see the roadmap until fairly soon, uh, before the meeting. And I wouldn't really had a chance to digest it and think about it a lot. I'm not ready to approve it tonight.
I am not ready to approve it until we consider adding, at least considering, exploring an advisory panel of some kind. I think we have heard this really loud and clear, not just from the council, but from the community. And if we don't listen in this instance, how will they believe we will listen in any instance?
Any other comments? Call the vote.
Marie and Mike's, is, I, I, well, I've been heard from Marie or Mike.
I can't, I, I, can you hear me now?
Can, Marie?
Yeah.
Okay, cause I haven't been able to, I've tried a couple of times to speak, but couldn't. Um, yes, let's, let's look at this thing a little further. I too got it very late tonight and, um, uh, digest it a little better and then maybe get together and, and revisit it, talk about it amongst ourselves. That's my comment.
Mike?
Yeah, I would really like to see us, I would like to see another draft of this. I think it has a lot of really useful things in it. But what, what it goes back to is, I think our neighbors are looking for a little more voice and more input. And there are a lot of very useful things that are in here. But I think it needs some more work and I, I really don't want to vote on this and then have a sort of vague conversation. I think if we're gonna call this a transformational roadmap, we need to at least include more opportunity for community voice in it. So I, I don't want to support the, the motion if it's just adopting the roadmap, map as is.
So, Tim, do you want to, um, hearing, hearing from the rest of the council and with the understanding we want to, uh, tweak this? Do you want to, uh, withdraw your motion?
No, I, well, I, well, the, the agenda is consider adoption of the police transformational, transformational roadmap. I made the motion, it was seconded by Chad, we've heard the discussion. Now we can just have the vote. And, um, if, if we, you know, if we, we, um, unless we, you rather, instead of a vote down, you would rather just not have a vote on it at all.
That would be my preference at this stage.
Okay, all right, um, I, if, I'll withdraw the motion.
And withdraw the second?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to table the adoption of the police transformational roadmap to a time when we can have a live discussion. And I don't see why we can't have one in, like we had the other night. Even if it's for this issue. I want to see the people I'm talking to, I want to be able to engage the people I'm talking to without having my phone cut off or without having, um, uh, interrupted, uh, speech.
You're gonna have to get off dial-up.
I'm not on dial-up.
I'm just kidding.
I'm, uh, I, I hear you, Tim, and I, I hear you, Tim, and I'll support you. Just be aware, I probably won't be able to go to city hall for a couple of months, I won't be able to be there, so.
All right, so we're mov- we're moving on here.
You could be.
Can we just have, make sure to have an option for call-in too?
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
Good, thank you.
All right, let's move on here. Uh, so Dom, we're gonna, uh, table the discussion or the adoption of the roadmap, uh, further discussion relative to an advisory committee, um, and, and other topics as well. So we will, um, we'll move on to item number six. Uh, police department report from interim chief Mo Lamont. Uh, Mo, thank you for joining us, uh, thanks for, uh, hanging in there with us. And, um, I'm sure you, um, it was beneficial for you to hear the comments as well. So, um, Dom, I'll turn that over and, um, or just give it to Chief Lamont.
I think you can send it to the chief.
Okay, Mo, it's all yours.
Hello?
Hello, Mo. Thank you for joining us.
Chief, unmute yourself again, I just tried to unmute you and I ended up muting you. Sorry.
Are we good now?
Yes, sorry.
Okay, there we go. Okay, first of all, um, nice to speak to everybody. I didn't get a chance to speak to anybody the other night at the meeting on Thursday, so, um, it's my first chance, I guess. Um, I'm excited to be here, first of all, in this position. Um, I am excited to work with MRI as well, um, and the city council and, uh, the mayor. I think it's a good opportunity, despite all the recent issues, I think we're gonna get through this all right. Tonight, I am here to speak about a few, just three topics. I'll make it really quick, so I know we're running a little bit late. First one, NCSS, uh, Northwestern Counseling Support Services. I could talk about this all night, so I, I will keep it brief. But this project, uh, started in St. Albans Police Department about six years ago. They had it a little bit before the Vermont State Police, but I'm gonna talk more about the history with the state police because it's very similar to the St. Albans Police Department, but I have the experience of the state police side, it's the same thing. I was responsible for the state police getting it after the St. Albans Police Department got it. It's the same exact program. So currently in the St. Albans Police Department, we have a, an embedded crisis intervention specialist of who, again, who's been here about six years. St. Albans PDA, the first in the region, the St. Albans barracks of the state police was the second one. It's a collaboration between the police departments and Northwestern Counseling Support Services. It's completely funded by Northwestern Counseling Support Services. The money originally came from the state when they lost the, the state hospital. Uh, the money was distributed for support, um, with mental health issues within the communities. Uh, we were given the two positions and they're both daytime positions. The gentleman that works out of the barracks, uh, came right from Northwestern Counseling, who was employed there a few years prior to taking on the position as the embedded worker and as was the one to say on the police department. Their primary focus is to go with and assist police professionals when they go to calls that involve people in crisis. The goal on the police end was to bring a mental health specialist with you when you go to scenes to, you can work more effectively to communicate with peaceful people who are in crisis, reduce the police time on the scene of calls, and have someone with you who could immediately establish a follow-up plans with the people who might need continued mental health assistance and reduce the number of hours that same person might be spending in emergency room while they're waiting for that process to go through in the emergency room end of things, which can take a long time. Uh, so what we were finding prior to having these people call us when they're in crisis was the police officers were going. We weren't getting a lot of assistance from NCSS only because they, they were overloaded and they didn't have people that could respond right away. So we were more or less putting a Band-Aid on the situation at the scene. If we couldn't talk the people into going with us to seek mental health intervention at the hospital or at NCSS, the people were being left at their residence and that wasn't the best outcome. This way, we have an intervention specialist again that goes with you. They can help them on the scene, they normally can talk them into going with them because they have that expertise. Or they can set up follow-up plans with them at a later time. And what we learned more importantly was that you didn't have to just look for calls to screen for crisis, uh, which are kind of easy to tell from the nine-one call or the internal call at the building. You can tell when somebody's in crisis, you can kind of learn from experience when somebody's upset and you get it in their tone of voice or just a call in general. What we learned is that most calls involve crisis, whether it's a car accident or a juvenile problem, people don't ever call us when we're having a good day. So we quickly found that you could use that worker for anything. And we were putting them in a cruiser all the time, they were responding to calls all day long. And the amount of work they were doing was fantastic. And the amount of work it was taking off, the officers was fantastic. And the response we're getting from the community and the members we were helping was fantastic. In that, that job, that collaboration, uh, has been, I've said this a hundred times in the legislature where I've been and testified for five years on this project, is the best resource I've seen in my twenty-plus years in state police. Um, and now I understand this year, they finally passed money, they're putting money into this, so they can get this statewide. This has been the best thing I've seen. We haven't St. Albans Police Department, it's used all the time. If I had made it my way, we'd have three of them, um, because it's just the best, it's just a way to deal with people in crisis to have an expert with you. You can train police officers in a lot of different things, but that is exactly the problem. We're trained in a lot of different things. You can only maintain so much training, you can only go to so much training. There's only so many hours in a day, so many days in a week, so many weeks in a year. You're much better if you can have an expert go with you and, and accompany you to these calls and they can take over. The only downside is you're not sending your S, your NCSS embedded crisis interventionalists alone. You have to be, accompany them because you own them, you're responsible for them, you're accountable for them. So they can't go to these calls on their own. So it does hire up a police officer. But once they get on scene, it's just a great, just a great asset. Uh, so that's kind of all I have for NCSS. Again, I could talk about it all day, uh, I could give you success story after success story after success story. Uh, but it's just, it's just a thing that we strongly believe in, in this county and the two biggest law enforcement agencies in the county. And St. Albans Police Department, uh, uses it, we're gonna continue to use it. I'm gonna push harder to get a second position if I can, um, it's, uh, it's great for this area. The second thing we have is de-escalation, I was asked to talk about that real quick. We had de-escalation training set up and COVID hit, it was postponed. Um, I'm happy to say that our first day of de-escalation training is tomorrow for half of the PD. The second training is on Thursday for the second half of the PD. Every officer's going through it, um, including dispatch, is being put on by PERF, which is a police executive research forum, and ICAT, ICAT is certified trainers. Um, it's a full day of training and I've got the, the modules. Um, it's a, it sounds like a great training. Uh, it starts off with intro on why de-escalation is, excuse me, is so important. And then it goes into critical decision-making, uh, the important, the importance of critical decision. It goes into crisis recognition and response, uh, which is how to recognize individuals who are experiencing a behavioral crisis caused by mental health, drug addiction, or another condition. It goes in tactical communication, which is specific and detailed instruction on how to communicate with subjects who are agitated or non-compliant. It focuses on communication and active listening to gain compliance. It goes into operational safety tactics and using critical decision ma- making models as a foundation. And it talks about reviews, critical response, post-response, pre-response, responsive tactical incidents in which a person, behavioral crisis, is acting irrationally and erratically and not, but is not brandishing a firearm. It highlights your tactical pause, talks about using distance as your friend. And it goes into integration practice. And that, that part you do, uses videos and scenarios to help the officer understand the training they just took. Uh, this training be instrumental to us. Um, everything to start with your verbal skills. And I think that we will learn a lot, especially, I, I shouldn't say just our newer officers, all of our officers, particularly our newer officers, unless the academy has changed a lot since I went through, which was in the nineties. Um, there wasn't a lot of de-escalation training. There was a lot of communication training, but not a lot focused on people suffering from mental health issues, as well as addiction behavioral issues. So I'm really looking forward to that. suffering from mental health issues um as well as addiction behavioral issues. So I'm really looking forward to that. Uh I'm attending it as well tomorrow, so I'd be able to report more about, more back on that after that. In addition, the FBI is putting on online classes in August. Um they're free classes. Uh they're on crisis communication. I'm asking that every officer attend that, uh so that'd be going on throughout the month of August and I'm looking forward to that. Hello.
Did we lose you, Mo?
Are you still with me?
Yeah, we are now, yep. We we were. You got muted again. There we go.
The last subject I was asked to talk about that I will, I'm gonna actually ask a couple of the commanders talk about is our current initiatives. So I've been in this position just over two weeks. We have a lot of current initiatives and a lot of, a lot of things we're trying to change, update, push out. A lot of them revolve around MRI and what they're recommending, recommending, but a lot of that is administrative in nature at this point. Uh but one of the biggest things I want to push out, we want to push out is community policing. I think that's, that's what everybody wants uh nationwide and in Vermont as well, in Franklin County as well, in St. Albans as well. That's our goal is to get back to get away from uh the warrior concept into the guardian concept. And the best way to do that is get back to talking to people, getting out in the public, and I, and there's a lot of different ways to do that. When I started putting this together, I asked, because I didn't know, because I haven't been here, uh but I asked, what do we do now that I don't know about? And I asked the three commanders that I have and they shot me emails and verbal conversations and I started writing them down. I'm just gonna read them. It'll take me one minute, but I don't know if people realize how much we are involved in now. Uh but just real quick, I mean, coffee with a cop, bike rodeos, cruiser tours for daycares, sport team tours, Boy Scout tours, daycare visits, canine demos, national night out, block parties, touch a truck event, park patrol, foot patrol, Christmas toy drives, do ice cream card handouts, the COVID birthday parades, which we did a ton of them. The hospital and correctional center appreciation, appreciation parades, popsicle handouts, which are going on right now almost nightly, the tree lighting event, the Maple Festival, almost all BFA sporting events and and many of our officers are coaches at local levels or at BFA level. And the other thing we do, we're involved in, we have officers that are highly involved in Martha's Kitchen. We're involved in Turning Point and again, we're involved in NCSS. Just real briefly on the administrative tasks, we're looking at the way we do evals. We're looking at the way we do promotional process with new documentation. We're engaged with MRI to look at the policies directly related to that. So there's a lot of things in the, in the works right now. It's gonna take us a little bit of time. We will get there. I just asked everybody to be a little bit patient. A lot of things are on our plate, um but we are willing to work together towards the common goals. Uh we do have a really good foundation. Um I I think people should MRI. I heard some of the criticisms with the panel, particularly what they're made up of. You can't take away experience, though. They have a lot of it and you, one thing you should consider as well is they are Kalia standard experience. My last agency I worked for was Kalia Standard. That's a very high bar and just if we, if we get nothing else of MRI, if we get the Kalia standard policies from them or advice on the policies from them, you can't take that. That is irreplaceable at this point and it's very important that we listen to them on at least that part of it. And I understand the perception potentially um from that side, um that view. But again, they are, they are bringing the clear standard in and um it's very strict standard and it's worth us listening to it. That's all I have on those three. I have a few commanders on the line, uh if they wanna pipe in at all.
So Ben, I think Paul, uh not sure if Jason's on. Does anyone like to say a few words?
I just wanted to say that I agree with everything that interim chief Lamont has said. Uh at this point in time, he's covered a lot of stuff that we are moving forward and definitely the past two weeks, if not the past month with the agency and we look forward to moving everything forward.
Thank you, Ben. Paul.
I gotta unmute it now. Thank you. Uh again, I'll reiterate what uh Chief Lamont has already said. One of the things I've been looked to, looking to take over, look to review has been the performance evals, which we're getting back to now doing the initial expectations of what we expect of our officers, a quarterly assessment on how they're performing and then ultimately with an annual um performance review, if you will, on how they performed. Uh we started this process back in February, March timeframe. So we're coming up here shortly on the new uh quarterly assessments uh to be due by, for everyone, but it is a work in process and as Chief Lamont said, that's we do have a a lot of on our plate that we're plucking away a little bit at each time.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Okay, when uh on the council have any questions for chief or staff?
I got two questions for the chief. Um thank you, chief, for being here. Uh two quick questions. I'll probably, I'm gonna say one and probably forget the other, but what currently is the um how do citizens make complaints about police officers? What's the current process? Like I I've never seen a complaint or I I just don't know how it's done. How, how, what's that process?
Chief, is you out there?
If you're muted.
Still muted?
No, you're good now. Oh, you're, now you're muted.
Better?
Yep.
I'm having problems with this phone, obviously. Sorry. Uh so our lobby is still closed because, due to COVID. But if somebody came to the barracks make or the office make complaint, we would send somebody out to take the complaint from them with a form. Every complaint has a form. Or they could simply call it in and we would take the complaint that way. But every complaint is documented and investigated and there's a follow-up. But so it, but it can be done by phone or in person. And that includes an anonymous complaint as well.
Thank you. And what, how many um, how many, how do we involve the Community Justice Center? Do they? Do we, do we involve them often and is the attorney's office involved or can we go directly to the Community Justice Center to work on an issue and keep the judiciary piece out of it?
So that's, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I was just saying, I just didn't know if that was legal or or what. I just don't know the process.
So, and I've got to get with the, get with the state attorney's office. Right now, everything is difficult be, again, because of COVID. There are several days that the state attorney isn't even in their office. So typically, the state attorney can help you with that. The justice, I'm not sure if you can go directly there or not, to be honest with you. I would have to check with state attorney's office, but everything normally goes through them.
How often do we use the, how often, you know, what are, what are some cases? What are some examples that we might use the justice center, Community Justice Center and, you know, how often do we, do we use them? Is it fairly often or occasionally or what?
So I'm gonna only be able to speak from my time in my last, in my last profession or my last job, um last agency. And at that agency, everything that was done through the justice center went through the state attorney's office. We didn't have any direct contact once a case went down. So at this agency, my understanding is we have more co, more say in it. So that's something I'm have to work with. That's on my list of stuff. I'm have to work with the state attorney's office and see how we become more involved. That's my honest answer.
Okay, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for chief from the council?
Yeah, I'd like to ask chief, uh chief Jim Pelkey, how are you?
Good, sir. How are you?
Good. Um question on your im- embedded NCSS worker.
Yes, sir.
We've heard a lot tonight about possibly having mental health issues dealt with by non, non, non-police, just the mental health worker, yet you say that we have a police officer go with that uh worker. My ex man, you know, I've been around a long time. I was with the court system for a while. My experience obviously is that some mental health issues could be dangerous to a mental health worker going alone and not having a police officer backup. Would you agree with that?
Our policy, and I'm speaking historically now again, um from my last agency, was we never let them go alone because we are responsible for them. Cause yes, some of those situations are dangerous, danger, very dangerous or or could turn to be dangerous. Typically, we would deem the sa- scenes as safe and then we would leave so not to interfere with any process they were having with that person in crisis if that, if we could leave. Here, um I know that Josh, who is our mental health crisis embedded worker, has made a lot of relationships, so they can do follow-up. They can do follow-up on their own, um if, if it's not a person that's actively in crisis.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, so we're um chief, thanks for the report. We appreciate it. We look forward to seeing you on a monthly basis. If there's no other questions from the council, we'll move on to um chief, and I'm, before we move on, I just want to thank you for all your work and for um all the officers as well. We've seen um at least in our neighborhood, a lot more activity uh in the community policing, so thank you for that. Uh moving on to seven, a request for public art wall. I guess that's you, Chip. We'll turn it over to you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um you know, summarize my memo a little bit, but there's, there's been discussion about public art walls in the city for a while and the first two that we did were on uh the, they're in the building at Houghton Park and I hear there's some art up there now, which is great to hear. Haven't seen it yet. And the thing about art walls is they change often, so I, you know, hope I get to see what's on there before another artist comes through and puts something else up there. But anyway, you know, the city was always kind of dipping its toe into this, which is the reason why the two first walls. There we go. If everyone looks at Chad's screen, he's got a picture, two hands and a heart symbol. Looks like a painting about unity and inclusion. So, you know, we kind of eased into this by putting it at Houghton Park. Chad's right across the street. Um it could be more of a neighborhood art wall. It's not as prominent as what's down at St. Albans Bay or or the two walls in Swanton. We've heard from the Parks Commission and the St. Albans Community Arts that they'd like something more prominent eventually. And, you know, there is a kind of a feeling that, you know, other communities have have done this, you know, let, let's do it too. There was a meeting at the Parks Commission and Angie and Andrew can speak more to this. But as it was explained to me, there's general consensus at the commission that another more prominent art wall is desired. There was no official motion, no um total agreement or direction from the Parks Commission on where it should be. But there were three suggested locations. One's the southwest corner of Taylor Park, which would be near Lake Street and Fairfield Street, that intersection. Another location was to put it on the temporary construction fence at the Congress and Main Project. And then the third suggestion was uh City Hall, the plaza in front of City Hall. You know, I I have some suggestions in my memo and some comments, but I was just wondering if if Andrew or Angie might want to speak up at this point about, you know, the discussion that the Parks Commission had.
Um if Angie's here, I'll let her take off with it and I'll fill in when she's done.
Hey, I'm not a
Hey, Ken.
Hey there. So Angie's unavailable right now. But I will tell you that she did write some words to share with the council. I hope she has mind that I present them to you guys. The Parks Committee, the Parks Commission recommends the installation of an art mural board in the downtown area of St. Albans City. Years ago, we considered the proposal from the community for the southwest corner of Taylor Park near the intersection of Main Street and Fairfield Street, which was never finalized. While this location remains acceptable, there's flexibility. Consensus at our last meeting favored any visible public space downtown. Our neighbor to the north, Swanton, has hosted a robust five-wall project throughout the city for five years, which I see every day when I drive to work. It's really awesome. Looking at Swan Arts Council's website, we can see that many beautiful, colorful art images that would not have otherwise been brought to life have sprung to life. Some residents tune into the presence of the walls and the experience that images as a way of connecting to their place in part through social media. And presently, the blank canvases are fostering art anti-racist conversation and images. That's, I'm sure she has a lot more to say, but that's what I have to present to you guys, so thank you.
Yeah, so I'll just chime in from there. Uh it was something that we wanted to, Angie was felt very strongly about and uh it wasn't a line item that was on the Parks Commission's to this agenda to discuss, but she brought it to us and we heard it and general consensus was that it was a good idea and kind of wanted to get the council's um thoughts on where it might go before we go forward with that, but just something that she wanted to kind of see immediate action for. There's no uh really negative or downside to this um that we could see, so wanted your thoughts.
If I could quickly pick it up from there, um I did provide some comments on the three locations that were uh described when Angie and Andrew and I met. I'm a little, I'm a little concerned about City Hall. I've taken another look at it and there's not really a good place to put a nice art wall where it wouldn't be blocking other things at City Hall, like the info board, like the City Hall sign or the view of the building itself. You know, in front of City Hall is still good in terms of uh surveillance and monitoring and being able to keep an eye on things, making sure that it's not damaged. But I do wonder if um, you know, if we really want to do a prominent public art wall like we're seeing in other communities, we might want to look at uh doing something in Taylor Park. And the city council might want to consider telling staff to find a feasible location to you know, check out other utilities and stuff underground and and look at sightlines and and put something near that southwest corner of Taylor Park. The other, the only other thing I'll say um be, before we get to the city council conversation and questions, because like Andrew said, we really want to know how you feel about this is you know, there are, there are probably gonna be problems with this art wall at some point. Public art walls can get messy. And that's really, it's really because of what they are. They're public arts. You have various different people that can contribute and sometimes uh not everyone's gonna agree with with what's up there. And part of the secret to um I think making sure they they don't become a systemic problem is having a good network of artists who can keep refreshing the image with new art. But it is gonna be a case where every once in a while, staff or the city council are gonna get a complaint about something because someone doesn't like what's up there. And I think we need to, you know, if we're gonna do this, we're gonna have to roll with it a little bit and, you know, part of what they do is they spark conversations and I think we gotta, I think we gotta own that if we're really gonna put this up. So I did put some suggested policies on the back of my memo, which really we just stole from Swanton, because you know, Swanton's been in the press lately. They've had some issues, but overall, they have what, they have this, what's considered a successful art wall. Every once in a while, it sparks some controversy, but overall, it's active. It's, it's flipping over um quickly with with new art, so. I think some keys are uh avoiding advertisements and words as a way to keep them from becoming signs. Being in constant consultation with recognized hate themes and uh trying to quickly uh remove or alter any hate themes that show up so that they become something else quickly. And uh just the policies in general are that art walls are typically very open. No one really can, no one, there's no line of artists. There's no queue, like you get to go, then you get to go, then you get to go. And you kind of assume that artists are gonna really respect each other's work, let it stay up for several days before you put up your own, but in terms of the way artists should see this, you know, there's no promise about who gets there first or how up, how long your art's gonna be up before someone changes it or or totally replaces it with something else. So I'm just assuming the council was able to read the memo and Andrew and Angie and I are happy to hear any questions or hear any input you might have.
Chip, I don't have any questions. I just want to make a comment. Uh I think these things are fantastic. I, you know, there's some great places that I think we could have some, have them, probably not as prominent as Taylor Park. But you know, maybe the museum would allow, allow folks But, you know, maybe the museum would allow folks to have one, you know, somewhere around the museum when the construction's all done across the street. But there are some spots that we may be able to put them, and I think they're fantastic for all the things that you just said. They open up conversation. They allow us to see the, the, the great amount of talent that we have in our community that some of us might not otherwise see. We had a little Banksy art over here the other day, I think on Saturday or Sunday, we had our, we had someone do some spray painting. So it was absolutely fantastic. So fully support it. And I would recommend that all my fellow city councilors also support it and as prominent as we can in Taylor Park with, with everything, you know, staying safe with sightlines and stuff.
Chip, this is Tim. I could pretty much guarantee you my artwork would be painted over within a day.
We're counting on that, Tim.
I, I like Chad, Chad and I have talked about this before. I agree. I think the art walls are very valuable to the community. But I, with that said, I, I had some concerns about the locate, the three locations. And I had two alternatives to consider along with what Chad did. So, you know, in front of City Hall, I, I don't think that works. And I'm sort of relating these locations to crosswalks and the amount of activity in those areas. You know, we've had a pedestrian hit in front of City Hall this, and I understand it was Election Day, but there was a lot of activity, a lot of activity downtown on that intersection with Fairfield and, and Lake Street and people crossing and people eating outside and people not paying attention. The two that I've always thought would be nice would be that green space by Food City, if we can get permission to use that. And the other one would be coming down at the, at the foot of the Interstate Access Road where we own that land as well. You know, those are two that I'd ask you to consider as well. If you're going to use Taylor Park, my suggestion is almost, and I know you want it near the road, but I, I think there's just too much going on on those two intersections and would encourage you to look elsewhere. Any other counselors? Any comments for Chip?
I'll just say that I support the idea. I think it would be a great thing for us to do, and I hope we can find that's visible, you know, and take safety into consideration, but like, let's make them prominent.
Anyone else?
I love it. I love public art. I think everybody said what needed to be said.
Okay, so you were just looking for our input, Chip, pretty much?
Yeah, I'll take Dom's counsel on this in terms of what, what he thinks we need in terms of enabling from the city council. But I think what I'm hearing is that staff and the other partners are free to find a more prominent location that works and, and doesn't present too much of a public safety concern.
Sounds good. You good with that, Chip? So you'll, you'll take that back to the Parks Committee with Andrew? Okay. All right, we'll move on to mayor's report. I don't have much to say other than this Saturday is the car show, a little bit different format. We were working with Kathy Minahan and Jason Weatherby. Instead of doing the actual car show, park and look at them. Kathy has recruited 50 cars, and they're going to be doing a parade throughout city and town, starting at Energizer, going up 104 across French Fisher Pond Road, down the access, down Main, down to the town, around the Rotary. So, and then they'll be back and parking at St. Mary's Parish Center. So that's this Saturday, starting at 10:30. I want to thank Kathy for all her work and putting that together. You know, with the COVID, it just was going to make it difficult, difficult to do a traditional setup. So kudos to Kathy and Jason for coming up with a plan that's going to work for the entire community, both city and town. So we appreciate that. And then the, I would encourage people to go online and vote for the mayor's photo competition. Vote for your five favorites. Towards the end of the month, we'll tally and large and, and display them in Taylor Park. That's when we talk community art, that has been a big, big hit, and we'll leave them in the park through foliage and then do some type of silent auction online. So that was about all I had. I'll, I'll look to Marie for any comments.
Nothing on my end.
Good. Thank you, Marie. Jim?
No, nothing.
Good.
Good.
Kate?
Good.
Good. Tim? Tim out there? We'll come back to you if you're. Mike?
I just wanted to thank Marty for getting Public Works out the second we found one of those awful Patriot Front signs out. You know, they had a sticker that was on one of those big mailboxes out in front of the passport office, and he got right out there and got it cleaned up. So when we see that kind of hate speech and white nationalist stuff, those guys are out. You know, we saw Mr. Levy in here. I just really appreciate how the response from the city was, we don't want that here, and got rid of it. And I also just wanted to say thanks to the chief and the, and the commanders who showed up tonight and say that I know, hearing a lot of the conversation we're having about police is probably a difficult environment to work in, and I really appreciate the work that they do. And I think that the force we have right now and the officers we have right now are great, and I'm interested in doing this work, work with them.
Thank you, Mike. I think unless Tim chimes in.
Are you still, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. Go ahead.
There are still some of the poles down in St. Almond's Town or St. Almond City Shopping Center.
Yep.
Some of the vacant buildings still in, in the city, they don't have to look the way they look. And I'm wondering why we're not getting out there. It's about the fifth time I brought this up. You know, we either under the PSO or, or through some other mechanism zoning, get out there and have them get these windows cleaned up and get the garbage out from, from in front of the buildings, and they don't have to look that way. That's all I have to go with. Thanks for the PD.
Tim, I just comment on that. I can reach out to Ernie again, Ernie Pomerol. The last time I reached out to him, the next couple of days, he had his crew up here taking care of those poles. And if you have a list, we've got a list going on PHSO right now, about 50 properties. So if you have any that you are interested in specifically, shoot me an email on those. And if we aren't, if we don't have them already, we'll certainly look at them.
Tim, are you talking both residential and business or one or the other?
Well, always, always residential. I like to try and go around my own ward, but I, I'm talking about some, some downtown properties right on Main Street and Lake Street.
Good. Marty, you'll take a look at that?
Yes, definitely.
While I'm here, I'd also like to make a suggestion that we start, we start moving some of these if we can, if there's any way we can, back to City Hall.
Okay. All right, I think that's about it for council.
I'm sorry. I didn't promise I would be quick, though.
You used up your allotment.
Whoever did the art on the electrical boxes in downtown.
Yeah, so it's.
It's fantastic, fantastic. I love it. It just, the sentence so small of a, of a, you know, an area to paint made such a huge difference on, right there on Lake and Main, that area. It's like, holy smokes.
Yeah, that's a group called Art So Wonderful at Eton and County, run by Bruce Wilson and normally using younger artists, including two artists from Franklin County for the, for the utility boxes.
And I was gonna, I was gonna give Chip credit on that because Chip's the one that reached out and organized that.
No, no, it's all them. It's, it's hard holding those folks back. They're trying to find other mural spots, and I'm trying to keep them from just painting other people's buildings. But there'll be more, there's more on the way.
It's fantastic art, so please keep it up. I also want to mention, I don't know what has happened in the last month, but the tractor-trailer traffic on Lower Weldon and South Elm has gone to almost zero. So it was like five or six a day for a while, and now I'm like down to hardly anything. So. Yeah, I was gonna say, maybe the, they're going on Third Street now. And I was curious to how many, how many absentee ballots that Curry's received. She looked like she had a stack of them. I did receive a request from a resident to have mandatory face masks when you're out and about in St. Albans. Obviously, that's not up for discussion or anything, but just something to think about. Maybe we can chat about next month. So I'm not going to make my opinion known on that right now. And the last thing I really want to talk about is that the track, the tracks on Nathan Street. So I had someone reach out to me last year about the danger of the children crossing because basically the sidewalk comes right up to the edge of the road when you cross there. And now I've had another complaint about the conditions of the tracks when you go over. It's the same complaint I have every couple of years. We go out there as Public Works, Marty, Marty or Alan, it was Alan in the past, we'll send the crew. Last year, Marty sent a crew. We did a quick patch job and, you know, it's, it's good for a few months. It doesn't fix the sidewalk issue, but it does fix the, the condition going over the residents in those houses when the tractor trailer trucks do go over those tracks, and they do because they're going in the back way to the.
Dustill Park.
Dustill Parks, thank you, Tim. It shakes the houses. So it would be nice if we could, you know, get on V-Trans a little bit about looking into that and trying to find a fix. It's doesn't, you know, it doesn't seem like it has to be the big thing that they did on North Elm, but it would be, would be good if they did it. And it doesn't, it's, it's one set of tracks. So it doesn't seem like it's a, you know, it's not five or six rows of tracks. So it just seems like it should be doable. At least give us a timeframe, like, hey, I'm not going to do it this year, but hey, next year or 2022, that's on our radar. We're going to get it. That's it, thank you.
I, I can reach out to Jim Code on that chat and get back to you.
Tim, if I could just do an update that the, our senators in Montpelier, Cory and Randy have agreed to work with the city and the chamber and FCIDC on some possible videos about wearing masks, especially in businesses. So just more encouraging than anything, but there has been some talk about that, and we're trying to look into some options.
Oh, just one, speaking of truck traffic, Kate, have you heard any more or what has been your experience on Upper Weldon?
It's been better. I have seen a few over the last few weeks, but I think the numbers are way down.
Good. We're making headway. Okay, let's move on to item number 10, approval of minute meetings from 6, 6A.
Well moved.
Motion by Chad, seconded by.
I'll second.
Second by Marie. Any comments, corrections, amendments?
Just, just real quick, there's a couple of places where there's like the word diffuse instead of defuse, and there's a stray apostrophe in a couple of places. I assume that stuff will get cleaned up, but Kristen and I can send it to you if you want.
So Mike, you'll forward that to Kristen?
It's like having Dave Pierce on the board again.
So we have a motion and a second with a suggestion for a couple typos to be repaired or to be fixed. All those in favor, give a thumbs up. Okay. Kristen, you have all of that you need?
Motion to approve warrants, 61520.
Started.
Motion by Tim, seconded by Jim. All those in favor, say aye. All right, up. Any opposition? Seeing none, the motion passes.
Motion to approve warrants, 63020.
Motion by Tim, seconded by Jim for warrants, 63020. All those in favor, thumbs up. And no thumbs down, thank you. Warrants for 630 passes. And we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Jim, seconded by.
Second.
Chad. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all. Thanks for your patience on, on the meetings and getting through this. So appreciate that, and we'll be in touch. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.